I'd like to call the order, the Westmont Village Board meeting of May 10th, 2018, at 6:00 PM, and ask Clerk Simmski for a roll call, please.
Mayor.
Here.
The clerk's here. Trustee Addington.
Here.
Trustee Barker.
Here.
Trustee Barry.
Here.
Trustee Guzzo.
Here.
Trustee Little.
Here.
Trustee Nero.
I think he said he was gonna miss tonight.
Okay. Attorney Zemanek.
Here.
Village manager, Finance Director Barker.
Here. Would everybody please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? Aye.
Pledge of Allegiance, issued by the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome. First item is open forum. If there's anybody that wants to speak on any item that's not on the agenda, now's the time. Seeing none, I'll close open forum, move on to reports. The first report is mine, and I do wanna congratulate not only the Chamber for fabulous Community Awards Dinner on the week and a half ago, but also to all those who won awards. Especially our Citizen of the Year, Steve Gobeliski, or Stevie G, was named Citizen of the Year, and DJ Sports Bar and Grill was named a Business of the Year. It was a great event, a lot of people have recognition, and that's on your website, right? They can go to Chamber's website and see all the award winners. Larry McIntyre, if he's here, we have a touring group from Taiwan that's going to be performing here this Saturday. So Larry, can you give some more information?
Very good. And we have a poster here for the overhead, if we can turn that on real quick. But for the last several years, our relationship with the Taiwanese community has resulted in incredible performances coming to town, and once again, they're coming up to Westmont High School this Saturday. The performance starts at 4:00. I do encourage people to get there early, because it's gonna be a first-come, first-served seating, and I will tell you that I've received dozens of phone calls from residents asking, "When, where, what time should I get there, do they need tickets?" It is not a ticketed event, so that's the reason it's first-come, first-served, so please arrive early. Last year, it was near-capacity crowd, so this year, we're gonna really fill the place. But I've been working on this, this all week, with Taiwanese community to get all the details together. The group actually arrives in town tomorrow at 4:00 PM, and then they'll start rehearsing first thing Saturday morning, performance at 4:00, and we invite everybody to come out. It's a free event to the public.
Thank you. And Larry, would you wanna talk about the event that morning?
Sorry, it's actually a true taste of Taiwan here in Westmont. Not only do we have the performance starting at 4:00 at the high school, but starting from 11:30 and going to 3:00 PM at the Taiwanese Cultural Center at 55 East 63rd Street, we will have a fun, family fun fest. What that means is you'll have a chance to experience Taiwanese night market food, which is a wide range of food types, and are absolutely delicious. Also, there's a lot of games that are gonna be set up for the children. It's great for all ages, children know children, come on out. We have tickets available at the Chamber office, it's $10, and what that does is it gets you some food tickets that you can then redeem for a variety of different food samples. So encourage everybody to come out, again, 11:30 to 3:00 at the Taiwanese Cultural Center at 55 East 63rd Street.
And it benefits...
Thank you for reminding me. The Taiwanese Cultural Center has been very generous since they started this program up. Over the last handful of years since they started the program, the proceeds from this event have been put into the Westmont Chamber Educational Foundation, so all those dollars that they donated go to local students that are college-bound. So they've been very, very generous. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. The Memorial Day Parade, May 28, 10:30, start time at Naperville and Cass Avenue, which goes south to Veterans Memorial Park, where there'll be a ceremony right around 11:00. So we encourage everybody to contact Lenore at the administrative office at the Park District, if you're interested in participating. And there is a USA Luge Slider Search Event, which I think we're publicizing behind us here on the 16th and 17th. You can register online to become part of that. We had that two years ago, Larry, or longer?
On the 1st street.
I should've kept them up here.
So this is actually their fifth return to Westmont. They've never been to any other community more than two times. And Fred Zimney, who's been our contact, has told us numerous times how gracious the hospitality has been that they've received from Westmont. That's not only coordination on the front end, but Public Works and everybody with the street closures and all the setup that occurs, they've really enjoyed it. So this will be the fifth time. The last time they were here was just last fall, actually, leading into the Winter Olympics, and they did want me to announce that they did win a silver medal in this year's Olympics, the US team did, for Luge. So anyway, looking forward to that again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And moving on, Clerk Simmski.
Well, you congratulated, and we all do, the winners that night, Stevie G, but I wanted to mention, too, that the Paul Harris Award from Rotary went to Craig Grimmer, and fortunately, I was sitting at the table, and Craig was totally taken by surprise, which is even more fun, when they have no idea they're getting something. So congratulations to all of them that won. And the Race to the Flag will be taking place on May 27th. Westmont Park District hosts it. It benefits the People's Resource Center. Visit racetotheflag.org to register, please. We need more. We have quite a few runners, but we always can use more, and it goes to a very good cause, it goes to our own community. So, thank you, and everybody have a nice weekend.
Thank you. Move on to trustees, and I'll start with Trustee Addington.
Thank you. I have just one biggie tonight. In a couple of weeks, we'll be the Red, White &amp; Barbecue. This is Alliance Club event that will start 12th year up at Ty Warner Park. We have, right now, forty-some backyard competitors, sixty-two teams cooking barbecue, there's gonna be food vendors, there's gonna be other vendors, there are, of course, a beer tent, the scouts are doing pop and water, parking is free, entertainment is free. We're always looking for volunteers, so anyone who would like to come and volunteer that day, they can go right on the Red, White &amp; Barbecue website and click on Volunteer and get your name posted. We could use help always, and it's gonna be a fun, fun weekend, as it always is. There'll be lots of barbecue, you gain weight just by smelling, but we hope everyone will come out. The weather should be good, knock on wood, and should be another very, very fun event, as it has been for the last twelve years. That's it, sir.
Oh, thank you. Trustee Guzzo.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I would like to start off with the Fire Department, invite the chief up if he would like to, excuse me, talk about some upcoming Fire Department exciting news.
Thanks, trustee. Our 95th anniversary celebration's moving along. Our own Jimmy Wright is making up some banners right now, two different sets. He's making a set up to post in front of both the fire stations to save the date and announce all our residents and visitors about when we're having our 95th anniversary, and he's making another set of banners that are gonna be hung on the side of the Antique Engine. We're gonna get the Antique Engine to all the special events. First event it's gonna be at is the Touch a Truck and Pet Promenade coming up, and so there are help with that. There's a lot of, a lot of committee members working, a lot of different aspects, and should be a great salvation this year, so more to come on that. And then we have our kids camp. We have a kids camp signup for June 6th and 7th, we're up to twenty-seven kids registered, and July 31st, August 1st, we're up to seventeen, so signup is online. You can go to that, the website, the village's website, and fire and sign up for that. Hope to be able to fill both of those. And then CPR training classes, 2018, the first class will be held on Tuesday, May 22nd. Trustee Addington, you were asking earlier. So Tuesday, May 22nd, is the first class to be held for CPR training, is to contact the Fire Department, Lynn Drolli, at (630) 981-6400, or you can go to Lynn's email at aldrolli@westmont.gov. So, thank you.
Thank you. Police Department, I'm gonna invite up the chief to recap a couple things.
Thank you, trustee Guzzo. We have the Drug Takeback Day on April 28th, so I just wanted to let everyone know that we had a total of 255 pounds of prescription medication that was turned in to the custody of the Police Department. We had two locations, one at the police station and a second at Mariano's, which was, Mariano's was nice enough to lend us the space, and so we collected 181 pounds at the police station and 74 pounds at Mariano's. That was setting a new record yet again, so we're two pounds heavier than last year, and it's the one time where, you know, gaining weight is better than losing weight. So we kept a lot of pharmaceutical products off the streets, out of the water supply, because a lot of that stuff goes down the toilet, and bad for, bad for the environment, so we will dispose of that properly. This week from tomorrow is the Cop on a Rooftop for Dunkin' Donuts, both locations. This is to support Illinois Special Olympics. This is the one big fundraising organization that the Police Department truly supports. It's a statewide effort, and I will be on, at the 63rd Street location on that roof, and then Deputy Chief Grun will be on the Ogden Avenue roof. We will have mugs for sale, t-shirts for sale, hats for sale, coupons for donuts, so please show on up between 5:00 in the morning and 11:00 in the morning, and show your support for that. And finally, on Saturday, June 2nd, we will have the Westmont Police Department Open House, which everyone has a flyer. I'd like to thank our Detective Secretary Angela Whitehead for putting the flyer together. I think she did an outstanding job for representing what the open house is gonna look like. This is, this is pictures from last year, so Lions Club will be cooking and serving up hot dogs, we'll be giving tours of the police facility, squad cars, we'll have the SWAT team there for putting, kids can wear the equipment, we'll have prizes, we'll have games, the kids can sit in the jail, which is usually the favorite spot for all the kids to go. We will release them to parental custody if you choose, or we can keep them for a while, whatever. So that will be Saturday, June 2nd. We do have an auction in the morning, starts at 9:00. Police Department collects items over, through the course of the year, a lot of found bicycles, a lot of other things that are forfeited to the custody of the Police Department, and by statute, we're allowed to sell them, and then give those items to community members, and basically get them out of our evidence room, which is, we need the space. So that starts at 9:00, that'll go till 10:00, and then the open house goes from 11:00 AM to 3:00.
Awesome.
Any questions?
Chief, you mentioned the jail is the most kind of highlight of the, we had a second grade class here last week, and I think we must have ten questions. Where do you do with the prisoners, how long do you keep them?
Yeah. Really makes me wonder what they're learning at school and at home, but yes, it is by far the most popular. They don't even wanna go anywhere else in the building, they wanna go right to the end of the jail, so we will release them in short order.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanna let everyone know, our next Public Safety Committee meeting is going to be May 24th, 4:30 here. Everyone is invited to attend. And lastly, I do wanna congratulate the Chamber on all its winners, it was a very nice awards dinner, and kudos to everybody, and that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. We'll move on to trustee Barry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At our last EDC meeting, we had a lot of exciting news. First and foremost, at 218 North Cass, this is basically across from like Dilworth Windows and next to the dance studio, there's gonna be an upper-story addition and a day spa coming on, and it's going to be owner-occupied, and they have young children that are gonna be attending the local school. We really felt like that was a good fit. I know Joe and Jill had worked on the facade, and it really is going to be a nice improvement for that section of town. And also, we have coming up the grand opening for Speedway at 6241 South Cass. We all remember the accident they had last fall, and that will be on Friday, May 18th, from 2:00 to 5:00 PM, and the public is welcome to stop in. But the real exciting news we had was on 63rd and Cass. We were presented a project from Kensington Development, and staff has been working on this, I think, Mayor, did you say, no shortage of two years, how long, how long this has been going on? It has been long overdue, and we tend to always get questions as trustees, as village staff, is what is going on with 63rd and Cass? What is going on there? And at the last EDC meeting, we were proposed a, just a fantastic project with retail, restaurants, highlighted by a movie theater, an LA Fitness, and just a lot of excitement, a lot of improvement coming there, and we look forward to seeing them, I believe, at next month's board meeting, I think, is what.
We're July.
July, July's board meeting?
Yeah, July, so June, planning and zoning, and July, board meeting.
So very exciting, and again, thanks to the staff and everyone who's worked on that. So exciting news. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You can just add to that, if everybody wonders what's taken so long, well, first of all, you gotta have a willing seller, and if it doesn't wanna sell, there's nothing we can do other than condemn it, and that might take five years, so we're very pleased that this was worked out. I'll go over here. Trustee Barker.
Thank you, Mayor. Couple of things this evening. On Monday night, May 14th, at 6:00 PM, Westmont First is going to meet typically with the third Monday, that's the second Monday. There was a conflict in the schedule with Westmont Special Events, so we bumped our meeting up to the 14th. They're gonna meet on Monday, the 21st, that way we can have Linda have both meetings. So at 6:00 next Monday, Westmont First will meet at the library, and we're looking forward to more planning for our third roundtable event, and then we also had some discussion at the last meeting about a high school and junior high village internship and shadowing program. That was an idea that was brought to the table that we wanna look into, so we're excited about that. And then last Monday, we had the Environmental Improvement Committee, and we had a very good turnout for the storm drain stenciling. I wanna thank the people that came out to help us do that, and I wanna thank the village staff for coordinating that effort with us. But we had a beautiful day, we got a lot done, we got three neighborhoods done, and one of the moms said, you know, the little bit that we didn't finish, she was gonna bring her children back, and then we're gonna finish that off on behalf of the village. So it was very nice, they embraced it this year. They also, EIC, had a, with the help of our forester, John Yater, we had a tree seedling giveaway, and I believe they gave over 170 seedlings away up at the library and partners with the library up there. And then they're wrapping up their speaker series for the summer, and they're already talking about the fall program. They got really good speakers lined up for the fall. One that's coming up is a dark skies thing about overlighting your, your community, and the tendency is that harms the animals and their habitat, so they don't want to overlight. And so that's, that's an exciting topic for them, and hopefully we'll have good attendance. And then on behalf of trustee Nero, this was something that Steve got me involved in years ago, was the Page River Sweep is May 19th, and he's not here to talk about that, but it's May 19th from 9:00 to 12:00. That's gonna be coordinated, I believe, by Mr. Yater, and it's going to be in Smith Woods this year, because the stream bed over there, we did the bank stabilization, and that's pretty cleaned up in that area. So he got permission from the Conservation Foundation to go to Smith Woods, and they're going to clear out Oak Forest and their, the invasive weeds and things that are in that area.
Not the forest itself.
Not the forest, but the weeds and the things that shouldn't be there, so they're gonna clean that up. They've asked anybody that signs up on the village website to please wear long-sleeve shirts and long pants, so that we have fewer problems that way. But there'll be an email to the people that sign up, directing them exactly what to bring and where to go, because I can't tell you for sure if we're meeting here or if we're meeting over there at Smith Woods. And that is all. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Trustee Little.
Hey, Mayor. We had an Administration Finance Committee meeting just prior to this meeting. We talked about a lot of items that are on tonight's agenda, so I won't recap any of that, except for there's a new policy that we're gonna be working on, it's called busking, and that's for people who wanna come into the downtown area and play for remuneration, and it's a lot of new stuff and new ideas, so we'll be working toward that goal in the very near future. Westmont Special Events and more. The Cruising Nights starts, guess when? June 7th, first Thursday night in June, we're gonna be out on Cass Avenue, I hope everybody comes out, we've got a lot of exciting stuff. The newest activity is going to be Steppin' at the Street Fair. It will start at 6:00 at the Information Tent. You will be allowed to bring in your Fitbit, and they'll register you, we'll take down your steps and give you an hour to make more steps, and then we'll be giving out prizes for the most steps and so forth. So it's gonna be a lot of fun, get fit in the meantime. Also, the Taste of Westmont is scheduled for July 12th through the 15th. It's gonna be a lot of exciting activity, a lot of carnival, a lot of food, beer tents, there's every event, so that's all exciting. And then the Pet Promenade and Party in the Park, Touch a Truck and Kite Flying at Ty Warner Park was scheduled, is scheduled for May 20th, from 11:00 AM to 3:00 PM, and that is a Sunday, so please come out for that one, it's a free event. Also, PVPN has a summer musical called Guys and Dolls, scheduled to run on June 15th through the 17th, and then again, June 22nd through 24th at the Westmont High School. So that should be a lot of fun, and that's all I have, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. So the summer activities can kick off on the 20th, go to the barbecue, go to the Cruising Nights, the Taste, 4th of July, we'll have a lot of summer activities for everybody. Moving on the agenda, items to be removed from the consent agenda. Does any board member see anything?
Nope.
If not, I'll ask manager May to please read.
First, on the consent agenda this evening are the village board minutes. Board to consider approving the following village board meeting minutes. We have the special meeting, which was the Budget Workshop meeting held April 5th, 2018, as well as the village board meeting held April 26, 2018. The March financial report, board to consider a motion to accept the financial report submitted for the month of March, 2018. We have finance ordinance number one, in the amount of $1,280,982.62, and there are no purchase orders tonight. Brings us to proclamations, we have three. First is Police Week, board to consider a proclamation to declare May 13 through 19, 2018 is National Police Week, and May 15, 2018, is National Peace Officers Memorial Day in the Village of Westmont. Next is EMS Week, board to consider a proclamation to declare May 20 through 26 as Emergency Medical Services Week in Westmont. And the third proclamation is Public Works Week. Board to consider a proclamation declaring May 21 through 27, 2018, as National Public Works Week in the Village of Westmont. That concludes the consent agenda.
Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion by Addington to approve.
Second, Little.
Motion made a second to approve the consent agenda as read. On to questions. Seeing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Motion passes. New business B, increase in available liquor license. Board to consider ordinance granting the following approvals for Uncle Bubbs Barbecue and Catering. One, increase the number of available Class 18, which is our catering liquor license, by one, and waiving the annual license fees after payment of the initial $1,000 license fee. And I'd ask Deputy Liquor Commissioner Mulhern to give some additional information.
Evening, Mayor, on village board. With me is Jay from Uncle Bubbs to answer any questions that you may have. Basically, Uncle Bubbs has applied for a Class 18 catering liquor license, which will allow them to sell and serve alcoholic catered events. Uncle Bubbs will still retain their Class 2 and Class 23 liquor licenses, and seek the addition of the catering liquor license to allow for an enjoyable catering experience for their customers. This, again, their Class 2 is for their onsite. Any business that wishes to have catering would have to get a catering liquor license, which is a separate class, which is an additional $1,000. Due to the fact that Uncle Bubbs is paying their Class 2 license, which is $2,500, $500 for their Class 23 license, a one-time fee of last year, this $1,000 will just be paid this year, will not be prorated, be paid in full at $1,000, and then each year that they renew their catering license, there'll be no additional annual fees, with the exception of their Class 22 license, Class 2 license. And I have Jay here, if you have any questions on what they plan on doing, or any questions on their alcohol serving.
I think we've discussed this with John, too. Not a problem.
No.
Explain maybe your, why don't you explain your catering business real quick?
I mean, it's, it's grown, you know? So for a long time, Uncle Bubbs was doing caterings that were like graduations and things of that nature. In the past eight to 10 years, the wedding business has grown really by leaps and bounds, to where at this point, we're doing, this year, we're already at over 150 weddings, five this weekend, you know? And in a lot of ways, so like, that's kind of an extension of a lot of those, is, is the liquor business. So yeah, that, that's really kind of like where the catering has, has grown to and shifted, and really at, at a rate that even we didn't expect.
Great. How will you handle...
Time to sleep? February. Okay.
How will you handle liquor sales at a wedding?
Well, so the liquor sales are still handled through here. So right now, for example, like, all five of those weddings all take place at different venues, none of which, at least on this weekend, are contained in the town of Westmont, but we still tax them in the way that they, they, you know, as a Westmont business at that point, including, you know, the full 9% with the one and a half restaurant, restaurant and taxes.
Please, trustee.
Yeah, so that would be just an extension of that. We'll do that in the same way as well.
Would it be considered, then, an open bar for the wedding, under the contract with the wedding?
Yeah, so it, it, there are like quantifiable limits of everything, which are also, depending on the venues, there's, they all have their own, basically their own set of rules that they need to adhere to as well. But yes, you're buying a package that does indeed have limits, but it is run as an open bar, as opposed to sales onsite.
Right, okay. And our liquor license, other classes cannot do that, but this is a specific catering that allows that?
Correct. They will be the second catering license in the village. It's, I think it's Truffleberry, which is just a catering licensed business, that's all they do, was our first liquor license in NY that we created it. Uncle Bubbs, again, to be able to sell the, sell the liquor outside of town and their catering part, needs to have the catering license. It cannot be incorporated into their main license, and so thus, they'll have, carry a separate license. Any violations that occur will affect that license only and not their main license.
So I guess every place you go, wherever you bring the money back to, Westmont gets all the tax credit for it.
That's correct, under the way that we would do that, because they'd be purchasing it right from us at that point.
Are all your servers vetted and trained?
Yes, so every, so we have a separate distinction on the catering menu in terms of a, a service of a, of a staff member that you'd buy, are all BACID certified.
Okay, thank you.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve, Barry.
Second, Guzzo.
Motion been made and second approved. On to question, trustee Barker.
I'd just like to compliment Uncle Bubbs, just a first-class business. Mark and you have done everything right over there. I'd say almost everything, but we're very, you know, I see all the activity going on, I, I see the, you know, the postings on Facebook with the weddings and all of that and the competitions, it's just really nice to see how that's grown and developed there. So I wish you the best.
Thank you so much, we appreciate it. We appreciate all the support we've gotten through the years. This is actually my 20th year today.
Congratulations.
And you're here. Yay!
You know, it was 14 years ago that Mark Wing came in front of this board and talked to them about the barbecue competition. And we picked it up, the lot between the lions, and back then, the Westmont J.C.'s, and it's turned into an unbelievable event, but these guys still sponsor the, we don't call it amateur anymore, but it is, but it's the backyard competition and, but you know, it's turned into something pretty fantastic, hasn't it, Jay?
It absolutely is. It's great to see what it's grown to.
Any additional comments? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
New Business C, Tax Amendment, Restrictions on Issuance of a Liquor License. Board to consider an ordinance amending Section 10-33B3 of the Village Code regarding restrictions on insurance of a liquor license within 100 feet of an undertaking establishment or mortuary, or funeral home. And I'd ask Commissioner Mulhern to give us, I'm giggling because that was in our ordinance.
That reads, "Our current ordinance requires a 100-foot distance from an undertaking establishment and/or mortuary from a liquor licensed business. This restriction was moved from the Illinois state statutes some time ago. However, it was never removed from ours. In order to mirror state statutes, we recommend removal of this 100-foot requirement as it pertains to undertaking establishments and mortaries in Westmont." Again, we've had, not had any conflicts, but we're trying to remain up to date with the state, and in case there would be a license, there's a possibility one could come and it would be less than 100 feet.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve, Barry.
Second, Little.
Motion been made in second on the question. Seeing none, roll call.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Motion passes. Now we'll go back to the first item that I skipped over. At reappointment, Fire Pension Trustee Reappointment. Board to consider motion approving Mayor Gunter's reappointment of Fire Chief David Weiss and Financial Director Spencer Parker as members of the Board of Trustees of the Fire Pension Fund. Is there any more thing to say about that, Spencer?
I think that covers it.
This fund has only been in existence a couple of years?
Yeah, I think we're just finishing three years because that's the length of the term.
I thought maybe you didn't like him anymore, so you passed over.
I thought you were going faster to get Uncle Bubbs through here, which was really nice.
Motion to approve?
Second.
That's why I was doing. Any additional comments? Seeing none, roll call.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Motion passes. Back on the agenda, D, Kurtz Ambulance Contract Extension. Board to consider an ordinance to approve a one-year service contract renewal with Kurtz Amulets. Chief Weiss.
Thank you, Mayor. The current contract with Kurtz expires on April 30th, 2018. The extension will run for one year. Additionally, the village has the option for two annual renewals not to exceed 2% of the previous contract price. And earlier in the administrative committee meeting, we talked about Kurtz, they've been with us since 1998, maybe 20 years. They've been a great service provider to the village of Westmont and the Fire Department. And it's the Fire Department's recommendation that we approve the one-year extension and consider the optional two years.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve, Barry.
Second, Addington.
Motion made in second. On to question. Chief, we're just approving the one-year extension tonight, or the two, the one-year, or the?
It's a one-year extension with an option for two additional one-year extensions, and those additional one-year extensions will not exceed 2% of the previous year's costs.
So John, what happens in a situation like this where we're approving it after the contract expires? We just work in limbo in the same pay and everything in between, is that what happens?
Yeah, you know, I saw.
It's like we have paramedic service, right?
I saw that. I don't know the mechanics of their billing. I did not discuss that with the chief, how they're pricing it, but I assume they're just going to give us whatever their normal pricing is.
Any additional comments? Roll call, please.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Motion passes. New Business E, Audiovisual Production Contract. Board to consider ordinance to approve an audiovisual contract with Kaleidoscope Communications. Glenn, it's all yours.
This is a contract with a videographer for meeting support.
The only clarification I'd make is I spoke with Glenn, and we've changed the agreement to list the contractor's individual name, not his company, because he's not incorporated. So we're contracting with an individual, Daniel.
Dennis Berger.
Dennis Berger, who does business as Kaleidoscope Communications.
Do I have a motion?
So, go ahead. So move, Guzzo. Second, Little.
Motion been made in second. Additional questions, comments? Seeing none, roll call.
Trustee Guzzo. Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Motion passes. New Business F, AT&amp;T Lease Amendment. Board to consider ordinance to approve a renegotiated cellular lease agreement with AT&amp;T, an extension to 2051, for the site located at 55th and Willmet Water Tower. Glenn, you're still up there.
This is the agreement discussed in the Admin Finance Committee meeting, extending the lease and renegotiated rate for the AT&amp;T cell tower at 55th and Willmet.
Motion to approve, Little.
Second, Barker.
Motion been made in second. Any comments? This side wants a couple. Roll call, please.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Motion passes. New Business G, Intergovernmental Agreement with DuPage County. Board to consider ordinance approving an intergovernmental agreement with DuPage County regarding right-of-way improvements and maintenance on North Cass Avenue. And I'd ask Director Ziegler for more information.
Thank you, Mayor. Staff has been working with DuPage County for almost a year now, trying to get this intergovernmental agreement finalized. We worked on it originally with the Hilton, because we were planning to do streetscape improvements along there, and along with the Hilton improvements, we wanted to do medians on further south, adjacent to Indian Trails. So this will encompass beautification, a median, street trees, and a gateway sign, and we're very excited to see this so that we can include it in our improvements this year.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve, Addington.
Second, Little.
Motion been made in second and to approve as presented. Comments? Trustee Barker.
Yeah, I'd just like to kind of congratulate you on all the hard work to get this far on these, you know, the gateway sign and the cleaning up of the entrances to the community. I know all the work that's going on behind the scenes, so congratulations.
Thank you.
Yes. Seeing no other, roll call, please.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Nero. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I meant Little, sorry.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. New Business H, Amendment to Administrative Code Hearing System. Board to consider an ordinance amending various sections of Chapter 1 of the Village Code of Ordinances regarding the Village Administrative Code Hearing System. And I'd ask Attorney Zemanek to give us some more information.
Thank you. The board established an administrative hearing system in February of this year. This is kind of a clerical correction to, we established it under one section of the state statute contained within the municipal code. This now references another section, which allows the village to prosecute building code violations in addition to all other non-moving vehicle violations. And there are a few specific sections in that building code statute that allows for administrative adjudication. Incorporated those now into our local ordinance. Consider this more cleanup and administrative hearings will proceed as scheduled.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve, Little.
Second, Barry.
Motion been made in second. Any additional comments? Seeing none, I'd ask for a roll call.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Mr. Mayor, sir.
Miscellaneous, yes, trustee.
Yeah, we could throw that, they could throw this right in there. With making these changes, when do we think that this will start being a reality? When will we start doing things in-house?
Started.
Already started.
Last month.
So, thank you. How much money we make so far?
It's not about making money. But it sounds like the process is moving, and that means it's going to move quicker the way we're doing it now, so that's great.
The only other thing I wanted to just mention, I probably should have mentioned it before, I got an email this afternoon from Mayors and Managers Conference, I think a lot of you saw that, request to sign, this thing that was, Mayors and Managers is going to take that under advisement at our legislative meeting on the 22nd, so just don't do anything until I get back to everybody on that. But again, they were not made aware of it.